A public hearing to order. Evening, everyone. A public hearing tonight is in regards to the downtown Rutland Tiff Hotel and Infrastructure Development Agreement Financing Plan and Phase Filing Submission. So, I will turn it over to our first speaker.
Great, thank you so much.
And if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Exactly, yep. I'm Stephanie Clark. I'm with Whitenburg Real Estate Advisors. I'm a consultant to the city on the Tiff District and on the public-private partnership with the hotel. And we are having this hearing tonight because it is our official ask of the board to approve the first-phase filing that's going to go in to the state for the Tiff component of the hotel infrastructure. So, tonight, it's a public hearing to open up the opportunity for input, but also to inform the public and give everybody the chance to have all the same information. We went through this in-depth last week at the Community Economic Development Committee meeting, and those minutes are available, and I know the committee report out will highlight a lot of it, but we wanted to make sure there was enough information on the record and out there for folks. So, this is going to be a short presentation. I have slides. I don't know if they can... Oh, thank you. I'm going to just give everyone a timeline update of where we are and where we've been, and do a teeny-tiny what-is-Tiff reminder, because Tiff is just one component of this funding, but it is an important one and a little complicated. And we'll talk about the public-private partnership and what that entails, both from a financial and a legal perspective, before I turn it over to the Beldens to talk about the outcome. So, a little bit on the project timeline. We are in May, and this is the time when we are soliciting the approval of the board for the package that's going to go forward. That package would go then to the state, to the Vermont Economic Progress Council, or VEPSE, in June for a July hearing, meeting, public meeting of the board, of the council, and then potentially another meeting in August. Following that approval, we can then ask the voters to vote on the Tiff debt component. Following that, and approval of our other funding sources, the hotel can commence its construction. We can commence on our infrastructure, and the idea is to get the doors open on the hotel in the fall of 2027. So, a quick primer on Tiff. Tiff is just one financing mechanism to get the infrastructure done to make way for the hotel. The Tiff component is an infrastructure investment by the city. It is funded by the incremental new taxes on private development within the district. And so, it pays for the debt that it incurs to build the infrastructure, which are private assets, public assets, I'm sorry, that are owned by the city after that as well. The public-private partnership itself is really comprised of four components, and the first is what you're going to hear about from the Beldens, the private outcome, the development. That's the reason we're here, is to see the hotel built. Though, the point is not Tiff. That is a means to an end. And the... But to get to that, you need a public-private partnership that incorporates infrastructure, and to get that infrastructure, you need funding and financing and a development agreement between the parties. So, this is the scope. There's a more detailed graphic on the website. There's materials in the board's packet, but the scope of the infrastructure is water and wastewater on Whale Street, water, wastewater and stormwater on Center Street, burying utilities, and streetscape. Those are going to be the city's investment into the community infrastructure that will enable the hotel to open and will enhance the vibrancy of the district, the downtown core. The total of that project is 7.8 million at the current estimate within the year of construction. We've got some contingencies built in there. 3.1 million of that is Tiff debt. 3.8... Sorry, 4.7 is other sources. We have applied for grants. We're continuing to apply for other sources continually. The bond that will come before the voters will actually be a $3.9 million limit. It's a three-point... We're targeting a $3.8 million bond to cover cost of financing. That can shift a little bit based on terms and as things change. We're here in May, and we're not going to incur this debt till maybe December, so that's a long time for a lot of other factors to change. We are proposing in our financing plan that was reviewed by the board and the committee to use short-term financing if needed. We've shown how that model would work, if that's how the cash flow works over the next few years, but again, that's subject to change because this is a Tiff district. The legal side of this is a development agreement. The letter of intent was authorized by this board last month, so the development agreement largely follows the commitments that were made in the LOI. But the development agreement also lays out expectations of both parties, contingencies, which are basically off-ramps for both parties until both have to take shared risk. It also identifies the range of possible debt, but it's based on a $15 million minimum taxable value of the hotel property after development, which means it's a floor on which we can base our Tiff debt payment, so that we're able to pay... The city is able to pay its debt on its debt service based on a $15 million taxable value. So, tonight, the ask of the Board of Aldermen is to approve the development agreement, the legal instrument that's been negotiated between the two parties, to approve the financial workbook that will get sent up to the state, and approve the submission by signing a letter to VEPSE. And that would allow us in the next few weeks to submit to VEPSE and hopefully meet in July and maybe August, and that's another opportunity for public information and education. So, if you have constituents that need to understand how they can learn more, those are the opportunities. And that's all I have for tonight. That's the synopsis.
Okay, good. Please, whoever is planning on going next?
I'm Kent Belden. Along with my daughter Carly and my son Justin, we're the developers of the hotel, the planned, proposed hotel, and I think most of you know quite a bit about it already, so I won't start over. He can bring this up, or do I have to do something?
Do I need to do something?
No. That's not the hotel. So, this is just a pitch deck that we had mostly for financial reasons, but Ed Clark drew this. That's Center Street, the whole view from the Mead Building all the way up to the hotel. So, you can see everything's to scale there. The hotel is obviously on the right, six stories. It sticks up a ways above the Hoppin' Moose and the other ones there, but several buildings in Rutland are taller than that. It's actually, I noticed when I came in, there's a picture over here. The best way to... You can see right there, it says Brewer. And that's exactly where we're going to be, and that's four stories. It's that building, two stories higher. Yep. That's the best picture I've seen of what it... How to adjust yourselves to what it's going to look like. How do I advance?
There you go.
Just quickly, it's a 99-room hotel, 26 market-rate apartments on top, bar, restaurant. Everybody here knows about the site. You know, there was a fire there in 1973. It's been like that since. That's kind of hard to see. That's the main floor of the... The main lobby floor of the hotel, but from that, it'd be hard to decipher anything from This is just showing... The picture on the left is actually a project underway in West Rutland for Mary Cohen's group, but it's on here just because that type of fencing, I don't know if you can see it there, it's hard to see, but temporary construction fencing is what we're talking about, and a few people wanted to see what it looked like. So, that's going to run up from, starting at the Hoppin' Moose, run up to... Up Center Street to Whale's, and then down all the way to the Herald Building, and it'll be right out to the travel lane. So, the parking space and the sidewalk will not be usable during construction. Sidewalk will be removed, and... So, that's the purpose of that slide. That's a picture of the hotel. The red there is brick, and, you know, that doesn't... Bricks don't really look like that, I don't think, so it's not the best color thing, but that's looking from the corner... That's from the intersection of Center and Whale's. This is looking like across the street from the Paramount. If you're in the Paramount, up on the second floor or something, you'd look across, you'd see it right there. That's the main entrance, about in the center of the red portion there. Just some different views. The building's actually U-shaped. From the road, you won't be able to tell that, but it's a U-shaped. It has a courtyard in the center, in the back, and you can see that in the bottom photo. Kind of hard to see there. Just to give you a couple of other views. That's it. The plan is to remediate the soils later this year. It's... Everything's still tentative, but we're hoping to start in July on removing those soils, and that's going to take until into November. There's a lot of work related to that. We're demoing the old newsroom. We've got a lot of underground stuff. We've got electric lines to relocate, different issues. There'll actually be a crane there next week, but that's... We're doing some work on the Rutland Herald Building, so that crane is not the start of the hotel construction, if you go by and see the crane there. Happy to answer any questions or go into more details if somebody wants it.
Okay. Yeah, we can open it up to anyone from the public who would like to comment or ask any questions at this time. This is a public hearing, so here's your opportunity. Any takers? Looks like we're all set. Is there any member of the board that would like to ask any questions of our guests tonight? Looks like Alderman Coopley.
That's you won't interfere with fire apparatus, fire trucks, et cetera, on Whale Street? The entrance, the fencing?
Oh, the fencing.
It won't interfere with fire trucks or emergency vehicles?
No, there'll still be two lanes on Center Street, but the fence will be right at the edge of the parking space that's painted, the fence on the street side of the parking space. But two trucks could pass on Center Street and on Whale's.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there anything else you folks would like to add before we close the public hearing? We're all set? Okay, if I could have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
All righty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We are closed and adjourned till 7 o'clock. Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Aldermen meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025. First order of business, are there any additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda tonight? I have one, and I think the city attorney has one. Let me just have mine first. I've been asked if we could move, under committee reports of standing committees, Alderman Donahue's report up, so folks can get going. We have some folks from out of town, so I'm going to insert that in right after the end of our special events permits, right before reports and letters from department heads. So, that's where we're going to do that one, and I think the city attorney would like to delete something.
Yes, I'm going to take the training I had listed on there off to a... And we'll do it on a night when we've got less on our agenda.
Okay, and that's on the back page, under mini-training?
Yep.
Okay, very good. All right, hearing no objections, we're going to make those two changes. Moving on, approval of... Amendment... Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion is to approve the minutes, and it's been seconded. Anyone have any changes, additions, deletions they'd like to make to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this is our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment on... Please step up to the mic if you're quad. These are for issues not on the agenda, which is the usual protocol, and if I could just ask politely for your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kim Heck. I live at 6 Mountain View Lane in Rutland.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you.
How are you, David?
I'm good.
I have been watching what has happened to Kim Peters. I don't know Kim Peters. I'm not here to support Kim Peters, but it's very troubling how this is all playing out. And I've been thinking about this for a while. An in... A letter commentary to the Rutland Herald last week, a man named Michael McLaughlin wrote a commentary, and I want to read it because I think it's very important. It's going to talk about integrity, which is a word the mayor uses a lot. It's going to talk about hypocrisy, which that's not a word he generally uses, and it's going to... I'm going to talk about a double standard that is happening right now, and no one is stopping it. So, this letter is addressed to Dear Mayor Dungus. After several weeks of attending, watching meetings, and reading Rutland Herald articles, I am deeply troubled with the path you have taken with Recreation Superintendent Kim Peters. Our community feels the same, as attested to by hundreds of community members who have taken the time to voice their displeasure via Board of Aldermen meetings, social media platforms, and what I assume to be hundreds of letters, emails, and voicemails to you and your office directly. I am also disturbed by your lack of privacy regarding your most recent comments questioning Kim Peters' integrity. According to sources, Kim Peters has never received any type of disciplinary actions or negative performance reviews. When you called out her integrity at the most recent Board of Aldermen meeting, you violated her privacy and have forever labeled her as unworthy. Even if that is how you feel, to state that in a public forum is damning. This action calls into question your ability to lead and operate with the decency that all city employees deserve. The timeline of these events and so-called issues of integrity is also of great concern. If you knew there was an issue that needed rectifying, why would you not address the issue directly with your superintendent? This seems like something a leader should and would have addressed. Instead, you let it fester, and interestingly enough, waited until the election was over to address the issue. When I say "address the issue," you should have met with Kim and corrected the situation immediately. Instead, you chose the route of not reappointing Kim and gave her no advanced warning. What kind of leader does that? Did you put your reelection ambitions ahead of your day job? If so, are you complicit in covering up any mistakes in the Recreation Department? Leadership at its core is about influencing others to work together toward a common goal through inspiration, motivation, and guidance. It involves guiding people through influence, not force, to achieve a desired outcome. Effective leaders inspire and motivate others, setting a positive example, and helping their team succeed. Mayor Dungus, this definition does not currently resonate with you. It firmly resides with Kim Peters, as voiced by countless current and former Recreation employees in the surrounding community. Please, do the right thing for our community. I am not asking you to reappoint Kim Peters, but I am echoing his words that says, "Do the right thing for the community." And what you're doing is being hypocritical. There's a memo that has gone out. You have stood at this podium and done everything that is in that memo that was sent to the Board of Aldermen. Kim Peters was served a cease-and-desist order, yet you feel free to stand here and denounce her, ridicule her, making the community believe she has lied to you. That is hypocrisy. Whether or not she did doesn't matter. What matters is you've silenced her, and that is unjust. And this community does not need an unjust mayor, someone that, I don't know, can't take the advice of his own attorney that said not to share things, as the board was told not to do. And everything I'm going to talk about is printed by Gordon in the Rutland Herald. So, fact-check, because I did. I took the time to go through this, and this might seem funny to some of you. It doesn't to me, but I'm going to talk about hypocrisy. And there was an article this past winter that Gordon wrote. It does happen to be about my husband, but you can change that to anybody, okay? In 2022, supporters of the Rutland Forward candidate, a group to which Heck, my husband, frequently speaks in opposition, questioned Capusta's ability to conduct elections based on some of her Facebook activity. Heck responded with some sharp comments in Capusta's defense at the Board of Aldermen meeting on March 7th of that year. Even though Capusta and Heck had a souring relationship, which can be traced through a variety of city and personal records...
Kim, I'm going to ask you if you could please refrain from personal attacks.
I'm not getting a personal...
It's just not appropriate.
This is not a personal attack.
If you're asking the Board of Alder for something in particular, or you want to give you...
I'm pointing out what is...
You already have. Now, I'm asking you to refrain from any more.
Why?
Because I'm running the meeting.
The mayor?
And I'm running the meeting, and I'm asking you to refrain. This is not a place for personal attack.
This is not a personal attack. Gordon printed it. This is not an attack. And if you listen to me, my husband defended her. He defended her. That's what's in here. So, under all of that, my husband, the city clerk, defended her. This man attacks her, Kim Peters, and you allow him because he's the mayor?
Not going to allow anyone.
You allow the mayor to. I watched the board meeting. You allowed him to call her names.
Kim, you're out of order. You're out of order, Kim, and I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Um, I have every right to stand here and speak my mind, every right, and I want all of you sitting up here to realize who you work for, including you, David. The mayor works for us. You work for us, the community. You don't work for Mayor Dungus. Turn it off. That's fine. You can shut it down, David.
I will.
You go right ahead and shut it down, and I'll be happy to leave.
Good.
But I will stand here and tell every single one of you that what is happening is a travesty.
We're taking a five-minute recess. Is there anyone else, and I believe there is, outside the row who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda? And we have a young lady over here, and she has trouble standing, so she wants to be able to speak while she is sitting, and I certainly go to allow that. And if you could just speak loud enough so people can hear you, and start by stating your name, and then you can tell us what you're here for.
Yeah. Karen Ryan, I live at 142 Rogers Row at Barwell, across the street.
Okay.
So, I've lived at Barwell for 12 years. It's very rare to see mice. Previous to 2022, six years ago, I got a springer, a bird dog, and he likes to run the fence in front of the building where the hedges and the birds are in the hedge. And I got two birdseed sticks that you stick in a birdcage, and I asked the office if it was okay if I stick him in the hedge, and Lisa said, "No, mice." So, that was the end of that. Barwell has a policy. You don't put food on the ground to feed the birds because it'll feed the mice. A breeding female, a single breeding female, can have eight or more mice in a year's time. So, anyway, in 2022, it's not bad. There's a lady who comes around town. I got this from the clerk's office today. Her name is Alexis Moore. She was here in November of 2023, asking to feed the pigeons. It says she was approached by an officer informing her not to do that, or she'd get a ticket. She wants to continue feeding the pigeons and not be penalized. The clerk wasn't able to find an ordinance saying that you can't feed birds. There was a comment in another meeting about something related about mice and rats, and the thinking was maybe it had to do with people feeding chickens, but it wasn't a downtown issue. So, anyway, that year, I was seeing mice in my unit. My dog was chasing them, and then he caught one, so a little tail hanging out of his mouth. I opened up his mouth, and I took it away. He continued chasing mice, but the next one that he caught, he didn't want to give it to me, he swallowed it. And then he threw it up on the rug later. Then, I got up in the morning and found this really big mouse on the counter in front of my coffee maker, and it ran at knee drop off the counter, under the chair thick of the cabinets, in a round corner behind the refrigerator. And when I looked up how a mouse could get that big, because it would have filled a pint jar, I found out it was a rat. And then I found out that they climb walls. So, EP has a really good exterminating company. The guy who comes is Ben. Everybody loves Ben. If you've got a bug or a mouse, you tell Ben, and Ben will take care of it. So, he found five holes in my ceiling tile. We have dropped ceilings, and they were all from mice, except one was chewed by the rat, and they're stuffed up with copper mush now, so those are totally clear. I have to look at my notes, I'm sorry. He's not allowed to tell me what's going on around the rest of the building for obvious reasons, but he said that things were just bad all over as a general statement. The exterminator, on the side of his truck, it looks like it's Paquette. He confirmed that that year, 2022, was just really, really bad. Alexis Moore had been going around town with her back cap in her bag, and she throws bread all over and seeds and peanuts, and that was the summer prior to. And then, in 2023, I didn't see her anymore, and that must have been why it wasn't that bad. She's not the only one that throws bread on the ground. Parking lot on the corner of Whale's and Washington that has the concrete retaining wall... Okay, so somebody's out there, I think, really early in the morning throwing bread, and I have always assumed... And I have always assumed that it's somebody who lives in Giancola's house next door because the back extension has a door that opens towards that parking area. I've never seen anybody do it, but the birds are out early. Um, and now there's a lady at Bardwell who has been told that it's okay to throw stuff on the sidewalk. And one morning, it looked like a bag of dinner rolls. There were seeds all over the ground. Sunday, she was out there again this evening. And what we're headed for is just another infestation of mice and rats. And the city clerk's office wasn't able to find an ordinance that deals with it. But there is an ordinance. It's 4999. It has to do with riding bikes on the sidewalk. And it defines an area of the downtown core by streets. And it's, um, Wales, up Center Street Hill, across Court, Down West Street, and then it goes other places. What I would like is to have an ordinance drafted and kind of pushed through as quickly as possible so that, I don't think there's anybody raising chickens in the downtown core. But if you want to have more apartments developed, downtown is a great place to live. It's a really great place to live. I lived in DC for 20 years. Before all this smart growth and transit-oriented design, it's better here. But we're going to have, we're going to have some more problems. And it's not just where I live. It's, it's building, it's offices and restaurants downtown. So if it's possible to do that, I think the sooner it could be done, would be better.
Okay. I think we've gotten to the point where we're going to, we have a response. I saw Alderman Talbot's hand first, so go ahead.
Yeah, I would just make a motion to refer this matter to the Charter and Ordinance Committee so we can look into drafting an ordinance to address it.
Okay. Looks like we, uh, the board is leaning toward sending it off to committee. And we'll get ahold of you if the committee holds a meeting, when the committee holds a meeting, and have a discussion about those issues in particular. So a motion's been made and seconded. Alderman Gillum?
The reason, she's bringing a very good point up because we have the same problem because I'm on the Marble Valley Transit System, and the parking garage is still having that same problem. And we've done everything we can. I know the police chief has done a lot of no trespassing for some of these people not to spread bird seed because it's causing trouble all over the downtown area. So this is a very good time to do this, especially when we've got a new hotel coming in. We need to clean things up.
Yep. Good. Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is, this, uh, subject is well worth the conversation. I've had complaints in my own neighborhood of rat infestation, and not only, you know, from feeding them, like, like the lady was saying, but also people that have compost piles, they don't take care of the trash, et cetera. So I think this is well worth the conversation to have in committee.
Good, good. All right. The motion is to refer to Charter and Ordinance. It's been seconded. Seeing no further. Oh, Alderman McLeod?
Just to clarify, what is the matter we are referring? Is it the matter of feeding wildlife within the downtown district? Is it a matter of the discussion of rats and infestations across Rutland City? Just, just to Alderman Clifford's statement, I think it would be worth to warn two things. Something very specific about the feeding of wildlife in the downtown district and something separate about rats. I just feel that the wildlife in the downtown district conversation is something that deserves its own time and attention. As a fellow resident of the downtown district, I've seen the effects of the bird seed. So that is just my piece.
So Alderman Talbot?
I'll clarify, the referral can be regarding potential ordinances related to pests or wildlife. That way, we can talk about everything.
Okay. That's good. All righty. I think that's all inclusive. So everybody understanding the motion is to refer. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. So they'll get ahold of you when they have a meeting.
How do you know how to reach me?
Uh, I, I think the.
Karen, we'll figure it out.
Yep, we'll figure out how to get ahold of you, Karen. But thank you for coming in. Anyone else outside the rail like to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda? Yes, not on the agenda.
Very good. If you're looking for something to do tomorrow, come to Vermont State University at Castleton, where we will have up to 2,000 high school students have Bring Back the Trades. We are celebrating the trades and trying to encourage students to get into the trades because we're building hotels. And we need people who are going to get involved as electricians, plumbers, contractors. And we're excited about what's happening tomorrow. We're so excited, and people around the state are so excited, that we believe the governor will be there pending anything going on in Montpelier. The Lieutenant Governor plans to be there. The President of Vermont State University, David Berg, John Casella, Sr., will be there, all speaking and giving away $25,000 in scholarships to students that are going off to schools that are trade schools. So come over and visit with 70 different vendors. Under the pavilion, under the tent, we have more than 30 vehicles. I think one might be coming from Belden Construction. Is it the crane? We will have a crane from Belden Construction there.
They'll have to come.
You have what?
They'll have to come to see.
Well, they have to come see it, right. To see the crane, and it's not a bird. And so please come on over and watch 2,000 students signing up to become people that work in the trades. And the city of Rutland will be there. I believe the fire department's going to be there, and there'll be some other folks there. Um, so thank you very much for attending, if you can come over.
Okay, great.
What time is that again?
Nine to three tomorrow.
Nine to three tomorrow. Very good. All righty. Anyone else on an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move along. Next on the agenda is communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Okay, I have two items. The first one is I would request that the board untable the nomination for the empty Alderman seat for Kerry Savage and circulate the ballot box for.
Okay, so the first motion would be to untable the appointment. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And before we have a motion for the vote, I just wanted to refer to the rules and order of business of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Rutland that was passed and amended at the regular meeting of September 16th, 2024. In its rule number 26, it's secret ballot votes. And I'm going to read the entry here. "In all cases requiring confirmation of nominations made by the mayor," which is, or presiding officer, and this is one made by the mayor. "And on all questions involving the discipline or suspension removal of office of any officer elected or appointed by the board, the vote shall be by secret ballot, under such conditions as shall secure to each member, so far as practical to say, where like rights and privileges as are now given under the election laws of Vermont to voters in state and city elections." So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, it's pretty clear, the vote shall be by secret ballot. So a motion to circulate the ballot box would be in order. Second. All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. So we're going to take a minute here to circulate the ballot box.
While you circulate that, I can quickly talk about my other subject.
Okay, well, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Absolutely. Make it.
You're welcome.
So in front of you, you also have a memorandum. This is for the temporary food truck licensing. This, um, you know, we discussed this at the last meeting. This is something that's in Charter and Ordinance. The city's prepared kind of some remediation. But in the meantime, while we're working on that and get that before committee again, there's this proposal in front of you that suggests that we do a $100, three-month permit. This would allow a cost-effective way for food trucks, and specifically food trucks, to operate in the city. While we're coming with a solution, they don't have to pay the $500 because likely the food truck permit will be less in the long run. And at that point, you know, at the, we would only issue this till September, right up until September. And at that point, we have to have the problem permanently solved in ordinance and pass the 30-day mark.
Okay. Thank you. Alderwoman Taddeel?
Um, I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to suspend the rules, take the issue up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
And then I would make a motion to authorize the issuance of temporary peddler's permits for food trucks only at a cost of $100 for a three-month period, with permits available for issuance between May 20th, 2025, and August 31st, 2025, as a temporary measure while the ordinance is under review.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made to approve the aforementioned proposal, and it's been seconded. Any debate? Alderman Gillum?
Just, just a clarification. It says food trucks only. Would that be considered a single trailer food truck? So the definition covers all that?
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. And all you have for us tonight? And I do have the results of your vote. It was eight yes, one no. The appointment has been confirmed. And I think it would be appropriate now if we could have the swearing in of our newest Alderwoman.
Repeat after me and raise your hand, please. Aye, Kerry Savage.
Aye, Kerry Savage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute?
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully execute?
The office of Board of Aldermen within and for Rutland City.
The office of Board of Aldermen for within and Rutland City.
And will therein do equal right and justice?
And will therein right and equal justice?
Do equal right and justice. To all persons in the best of my judgment.
To all persons in the best of my judgment.
And abilities according to law.
And abilities according to law.
I also solemnly swear and affirm.
I also solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the state of Vermont.
That I will support the Constitution of the state of Vermont.
And the United States.
And the United States.
Congratulations.
And welcome back. You're welcome. Okay. Let's move along to consideration of special event requests. We have several here. They should go fairly fast. First one up is Turning Point Center of Rutland Overdose Awareness Vigil, August 31st, 2025, from 1:00 to 3:00 in Main Street Park. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Misha Phillips. I'm a recovery coach at the Turning Point Center in Rutland. Um, we're asking for the permit because we do, August 31st is National Overdose Awareness Day. So we have started a candlelight vigil last year. We did it downtown last year. It was a total washout, but we're hoping to bring it up to the park for more visibility with Route 7 and 4 being right there, having people. So I have contacted the fire department. So everybody is on standby. If the permit is approved, they're right next door, which is nice because we will have live fire. And this year, we're not doing it on pavement. We're doing it over grass. So we promise to keep it away from the new gazebo.
Thank you.
So we do have, we do have fire prevention. We have first aid kits. We will have buckets of water as well as sand for any emergencies. We will have fire extinguishers as well. It'll be about an hour and a half to two hours, and we will take care of our own trash removal and cleanup.
Okay, great. That's terrific. Alderwoman Taddeel?
Thank you for the work that you are doing.
And then I would make a motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
A motion's been made to suspend and take it up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alderman Taddeel?
And I would make a motion to approve the special event permit for the overdose awareness vigil on August 31st, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM in Main Street Park.
Second.
All righty. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the permit. Anybody have any questions for our guests? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
We had another permit. Are we doing that tonight as well? Okay. I'm just, get it all done. Do we get called back up for the next permit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you are next. Yep, yep. Go right ahead. You're there.
So again, my name is Misha. I'm a recovery coach at the Turning Point Center, and we're asking for our permit for our SOS, which is our Stomping Out Stigma event that we do yearly. This will be year seven. Usually, we do it at Meadow Street Park, but again, visibility and having people drive by. So we will have Casellas Donates Trash Receptacles and Recycling, so they'll take care of that. We are in the works of maybe getting a food vendor or two to be in the park with us to do like a specialty item for, because it is one of our big fundraisers. So we will have that. We're doing sumo wrestling, so we are ordering sumo suits. So we're trying to make it as fun and visible as possible. It is a big community partner event where we help bridge the gap with many community partners and all of the resources. So we are hoping for the permit for that as well.
Oh, that's terrific.
And it's on September 6th, which is a Saturday.
September 6th, terrific. Alderwoman Taddeel?
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And then I would make a motion to approve the special event permit for Stomping Out Stigma on September 6th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Main Street Park.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Anyone have any questions on this event coming up? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, do great work on there. Keep it up. Okay. So next up is a special event permit, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, Rutland Area Out of Darkness Walk, September 13th, 9:00 to 12:00 in Main Street Park. Anyone here for that? Seeing no one, Alderman Talbot?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules, take it up tonight. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Rutland Area Out of the Darkness Walk on September 13th, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM in Main Street Park.
Second.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Can't ask any questions because there's no one here, but this event, I know, has gone on for several years. Alderman Donahue?
Just want to note that when the application hadn't had the insurance information, and there was a little bit of information missing on the next two, the city attorney was kind enough to provide that to me this afternoon so that, and confirm that it was all in order.
Great.
So I just wanted to point that out in case anybody was wondering.
Okay.
Yep.
Terrific.
Very, very important to have that insurance, but also good to have the detail, and I thank the city attorney.
All right. Very good. All righty. The motion's been made to approve, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Next is the special event permit for the Chaffee Art Center, Art in the Park Summer Festival, August 9th through, and 10th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM each day. And right after that is the same thing. Chaffee Art Center for the Fall Festival, October 11th and 12th, from 10:00 to 4:00 each day in Main Street Park. So Sherry is here. She contacted me over the weekend and asked if she thought that it would be a good idea to come, and I suggested, please do, in case there are any questions. So Sherry, go ahead. If you have anything like that.
Sure. So my name is Sherry Burkheimer Rooker, and I'm the director at the Chaffee Art Center on 16 South Main. This is our 64th annual, I know, it's crazy. And we've been in the park this whole time, and we love the park. And the new gazebo is looking wonderful. I can't wait for the music to be on there. As Dave said, or Alderman Lair said, it happens.
What's his name?
We've known each other a really long time. That, it happens twice a year, August and October. That, it happens twice a year, August and October, and you can all be really reassured because this is my 35th and, I mean, 45th and 46th Art in the Park that I have coordinated. So, and they happen twice a year, remember that? So I'm not that old. But it's a community event, it's great for the community, I think, because it gives us something to be proud of and to bring us together. And it's also great for visitors who, you know, draw people here, or who may think about living here, and then they say, oh, look at all these fun things they have. We bring in about 12,000 people for the, you know, two events, about 120 vendors, so opportunity for the exhibitors to make money selling their art, and we have food vendors, about 10 of those, and, you know, 14 musicians. And it all, they all, obviously, we pay them, and they can contribute to our economy. So I didn't know if there was any questions that anybody had for me.
Okay, Alderman Taddeo, Alderman, you had your hand up there.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for providing such a lovely activity for us twice a year, and I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules and take this matter up tonight.
Second.
Great, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I will make a motion to approve both special event permits for Art in the Park for the Summer Festival on August 9th through 10th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Main Street Park, and then additionally, the Fall Festival, which is October 11th through the 12th, 2025, from 10:00 AM till 4:00 PM each day in Main Street Park.
Second.
Alrighty, so the motion's been made and seconded. Alderman Gillum?
Yes, Mr. President, just a question, I know we have the same issue with the farmer's market, how are we communicating with the vendors who are coming from out of town about the 1% sales tax that they have to collect?
Yeah.
Is there a way you're communicating that to them?
Yes, yes, so last year, I received a letter from, was it from you?
Treasurer's Office.
Treasurer's Office. And, and so I included that when I send them their confirmation, I send it close because they have to give their booth numbers and all those things, so I send it to them then. And then I think I also, I also gave them, I also gave them a sheet when they show up that says the same thing on it.
Let's, just communicate what we need to have done, thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Donahue?
Just that Sherry had indicated that on the last, on the August 10th date, which is a Sunday afternoon, they wrap up in time for the last Rutland City Band Concert to take place subsequently at 6:30, and that they're, they coordinate that together, they kind of get out of each other's way, and all's well.
All is well at Main Street Park. Good, 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 two very important events, yes, not bad. Alright, terrific. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you at Art in the Park.
Well, at least my wife's pocketbook will be there.
Let's hope the sun comes with it, right? Yeah, okay, and finally, special events permit, 2025, Juneteenth Strut, June 21st, 2025, from 11:00 to 2:00. Oh, we do have someone here, good. So, good evening. Hi, if I could just politely ask for your name and address for the record?
Yep, Monica Lee Kiefner Sheher, 2986 East Clarendon Road in North Clarendon, Vermont.
Okay, go ahead, the floor is yours.
Perfect, I am here as a board member for the Rutland Area NAACP and Rutland County Pride today to talk about the permit for our second annual Juneteenth Strut, the first one was last year, and it was super successful. So this is just a celebration of the intersections between the BIPOC and LGBTQIA2S+ community, it's an opener for the Rutland County Pride Festival, the permit for which has already been approved. We co-host it, so the NAACP takes on the permit for the Strut, and Pride takes on the permit for the downtown piece so that no one has to do too much of the work. But that is the gist of it, it's really just a walk to celebrate.
Okay, alright, very good. Alderman Talbot?
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, and Alderman Talbot?
A motion to approve the 2025 Juneteenth Strut Special Event Permit for June 21st from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to approve, and it's been seconded, anyone have any questions for our guests tonight?
Can I just offer a quick clarification?
Sure.
The Strut itself is from like 11:00 to 11:30, the whole Pride Festival is the 11 to 5, sorry if I messed that up on the application.
Oh, that could have just been a typo.
The traffic has to be blocked all day there.
I think it was a typo.
Okay.
So it's 11 to 5?
11 to 12.
It's 11 to 11:30, it's just a walk from the library downtown. Yep.
Okay, good, we'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further debates, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Looks like you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we go on to reports and letters, we moved up Alderman Donahue's report from Community and Economic Development, so I will turn the meeting over to Alderman Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on May 12th, 2025, and it was regarding the TIF District Tax Increment Financing District Phase 1 filing and the Downtown Hotel and Living Space Development Agreement. Community and Economic Development Committee of the Rutland City Board of Aldermen met on May 12th at 5:30 PM in chambers at City Hall, right here. All committee members were present, including Chair Donahue, Vice Chair Davis, Alderwoman McClure, Alderman Gillum, and Alderman Whitcomb, and a quorum was present and voting. We also had a cast of thousands in attendance, so I'm going to rattle those off real quick. Aldermanic Board President David Lair, Alderman Tabit, Alderwoman Taddeo, Alderman Coopley, and Alderman Clifford, I think that makes up the entire Board of Aldermen. Other city officials attending included Mayor Dunges, City Attorney Le Chance, City Planner Bove, and City Treasurer Markowski. Members of the public included Consultant Stephanie Clark of Whiten Burke, who you heard from earlier, property developer Kent Belden, developers consultant Elizabeth Coolis, and Community and Chamber in Economic Development of the Rutland Region Executive Director Lyle Jebson. Additional members from the public included John Sabatassal and Peter Fagan. Members of the press included Gordon Driscillow, Rutland City Hall Reporter, and from the Rutland Herald. Chair Donahue opened the meeting at 5:31 PM and let the record note that Alderman Whitcomb joined by phone at 5:30, arriving in person at 5:46 PM. Specifically being considered were, one, the Rutland City TIF District Phase 1 filing submission to VEPSE, Vermont Economic Progress Council, of the Downtown Hotel and Living Project targeting VEPSE's July meeting. Two, the development agreement between the City of Rutland and Center and Wales LLC regarding the hotel and living project. Regarding item one, Chair Donahue turned the presentation over to Stephanie Clark, who gave a detailed presentation including the tax increment financing cash flow details, development details supporting infrastructure, including the streetscape construction, the utility upgrades, the water and sewer system upgrades, and other details. Regarding item two, Elizabeth Coolis reviewed the 15-page development agreement line by line, focusing on the developers' commitments and the city's commitments. The committee noted that the property tax stabilization can affect only the municipal tax assessment, not the state education taxation portion, and that the stabilization would include the special benefit district tax for the developer property as of April 1st, 2025, so it would also include the special, the downtown special benefit district tax in this stabilization. Accordingly, the city will fix and maintain the municipal valuation in the grand list of the parcel and development at 27 Whale Street at $616,100 for a period of 10 years, commencing two fiscal years following the municipal project commencement confirmation, which is after the construction period. The stabilization authority is granted to us by the Chapter 75 Economic Development, cited as Vermont State Statute 24 VSA subsection 2741, letter A, number 1. The intent is to be on the VEPSE's Board's July agenda, as Stephanie indicated earlier, with the aim of having a special election on the TIF District in the fall. Following a successful bond vote, the city would commence construction on the infrastructure in spring of 2026, concurrently with the development of the hotel project set to open its doors in fall of 2027, as you heard in the public meeting a little, about an hour ago. After question and answer with the developer and others in a robust committee discussion, Alderman Gillum moved to recommend to the full Board of Aldermen, seconded by Alderwoman McClure, the following. And this would be one motion. One, approve the development agreement authorizing the mayor to sign. Two, approve of the phase filing financial workbook. And three, approve signing and dating the VEPSE letter to apply, authorizing the mayor and the Aldermanic Board President to sign. Chair Donahue called for further discussion, hearing none of, the motion was approved unanimously by the committee, five yes and zero no, and I would so move.
Second.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded, I will open it up for debate inside the rail. Anyone have any debate questions on the motion? Seeing none, anyone have anything to add on the outside? Looks like we're all set. Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes. Very good.
I would just like to mention, Mr. Chairman, that we have a meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee slated for Wednesday, the 21st, two days from now, right here in chambers, and we'll be talking about the regional plans, well, let me get the exact... The Rutland Regional Planning Commission's 2026 Regional Plan and Regional Future Land Use Map for Rutland City. That'll be again, 5:30 right here in this room, and in the committee meeting will be the presentation by the Regional Planning Commission, and our city planner Ed Bove will be broadcast also on, or recorded for broadcast on PEG TV as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alrighty, very good. It's coming up Wednesday, 5:30. Alrighty, thank you very much, Alderman Donahue. So let's go back to our regular agenda. Worth a round of applause. Okay, reports and letters from department heads and officials, we have Barbara Spalding first up. RRA Set Final Public Hearing, Rutland Housing Initiative. Barbara?
Thank you, good evening. So the city received a VCDP grant award of $650,900 for the rehabilitation of 120 Maple Street into five housing units. The former three-unit building sat vacant since 2015. Hale Resources from Bennington has completed the renovation. The grant ends on June 30th, and as part of the closeout procedure, a final public hearing must be held. The hearing must be worn 15 days in advance of said hearing, and the RRA respectfully requests that the Aldermen set the hearing prior to your meeting on June 16th.
So moved. Okay, so why don't we have a motion, as Alderman Gillum has just mentioned, to set the public hearing at 6:45 on Monday, June 16th?
Second.
Alrighty, any debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, Treasurer Markowski. And good evening.
Hi, tonight we have Rick Brigham here from Sullivan &amp; Powers to just give you an overview of the FY '24 Audit Report, so I'm going to let Rick take over here and...
Thanks for having me here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Brigham, welcome, yep.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to go through some of the key parts of the audit, there's a lot here, 120 pages, a lot of information in that report, but what I'm really responsible for as your auditor is pages one through four, which is the audit opinion. When you give an audit opinion, you have basically three choices. The audits are not fairly stated, which is an adverse opinion, there's a qualified opinion, meaning it's fairly stated except for something, and then there's the best report you can get is a clean opinion. Once again, the city has achieved a clean opinion on their audit, and I always like to congratulate the staff and management for getting to that level, because like I said, you can look at the report, there's a lot of information, policy, procedure, all the things that go into this during the year, and Mary and her staff did a great job in helping us to get through all the audit questions and procedures, and so we wanted to congratulate everybody for achieving that.
Good, good.
So just quickly, kind of thumbing through a couple pages of the audit, looking at page 17, this is where a lot of the boards generally go to is the general fund, where's our balance sheet, what did we look like at June 30, 2024? And I, again, a lot of this is older information now, so things have probably progressed, but I'd like to focus on the unassigned fund balances, like you can see toward the bottom of the first column in the general fund, where your fund balance is $2,068,896 unassigned. So that's right in line with your expectations and with, with your policies, so I always like to point that out, that that's in pretty good shape and, and kind of ended up in that direction. So again, the same thing for the water and the sewer fund, if we're looking at pages 20 and 21, again, this is the, the balance sheet on 20, snapshot in time of what your assets and liabilities look like for your water, sewer, and your other enterprise funds. The thing I wanted to just focus on real quickly was kind of point out, if you're looking toward the bottom, the unrestricted deficits and surpluses, the water fund had $1,518, almost a break even, most of the fund balance is tied up into capital assets. The one I wanted to kind of point out is the sewer fund, which I think just kind of needs to be monitored a little bit, because obviously you've got an unrestricted deficit of 4192505, that's down from last year, which is good, I think last year was about 4663875, so there was good progress made on it last year, but it's something I would keep an eye on to try to eliminate that deficit at some point. I know Mary and I have had some conversations about this in, in, you know, obviously looking at the rates and, and monitoring that to make sure that we're raising the money that we need to, to cover those deficits. We're required as your auditors, if, during the course of an audit, if we find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, we're required to report them. I'm happy to also tell you that you did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that needed to be reported. We did have a couple other recommendations, which we have passed along, usually those don't have to be in writing, we usually put them in writing just so Mary can, we can discuss them throughout the year, so those are out there, I'm not going to go over them tonight, but if there's questions on them, I'm, I'm here, available by email. The last thing is there's some other required communications, we encountered no difficulties in dealing with staff or management, we had no disagreements with staff or management, there were no consultations with other auditors, and all entries we proposed were posted by management. So overall, I was very pleased with the whole audit process, I know Mary wishes it could get done sooner, and I know a lot of the reconciliations take time, I wish she had more staff to be able to help her, because there's, there's a lot of work to get into that, but again, want to thank everybody for help during the audit. Any questions?
Okay, does anyone from the board have any questions for our guests? Looks like we're all set for now. Thank you so much for coming in, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, alrighty, looks like we have Planning Director Bove up with at least one entry here. Authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement for municipal planning grant and refer the match request to finance.
That's it, this is for the planning support for the municipal plan we're going to do in the Act 250 Tier 1A exemption area.
Okay, so you're looking for referral to Finance Committee?
For the match.
For the match?
Yes, and then...
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Anyone want any clarification on what exactly we're, well, why don't I ask, what would the match be?
The match would be $1,942.
Oh, there you go. Alrighty, thank you very much. So the motion's been made and seconded to refer, it's been seconded, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Okay, and the other thing we've already taken care of, correct?
Did you vote on authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement? In the amount of $17,482.
And Alderwoman Taddeo would like to make that motion?
Motion to suspend the rules and take this matter up tonight.
Second.
Alrighty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement for the municipal planning grant.
Second.
So that motion's been made and seconded, thank you for clarifying that for me. Any questions for Ed? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, I think we're all set there, thank you very much. Okay, next up. Chief? Looks like you have an entry here, Veemers D. Motion on May 5th, Board of Aldermen meeting.
Thank you. So as you can see from the memo, if you remember, last board meeting, I had come to the board asking for a motion, oh, I'm sorry, it was a matter that referred to the HR committee, and out of that, the recommendation came to the board to make a motion to, which addresses the ability for non-union members of the department to join Veemers D. And that motion was made, passed at the last meeting, presented that to the Veemers personnel, and there were some modifications had to be made to that with some specific dates, so if you look at the memo, the, the former motion was there, the new motion with the language that they proposed, and really, the only distinction really is substantive anyway, is the dates that are in there, it makes it clear that the effective date would be July 1st for the non-union members to be able to join.
Alderwoman McClure?
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes. Alderman McLure.
Um, motion that all sworn, or I guess motion to change our previous motion, um, to motion that all sworn officers, including sergeants, commanders, and police chief that are not otherwise covered by the collective bargaining agreement, have the option to enroll in Veemers Part D, July 1st, 2025. Sworn officers, including the sergeants, commanders, and police chief that are not otherwise covered by the collective bargaining agreement, who do not elect to join at the first offering, can join by notifying Veemers by December 31st to join the following July 1st. All new eligible hires after the date of this vote shall be required to enroll in Veemers D as of July 1st, 2025, as a condition of employment.
Second.
Okay. So the motion, and it's a long one, has been made and seconded. Anyone have any questions for the chief? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Next up, Ed Gillen. Connor Park CSO Storage Engineering Services Agreement and CWSRF Loaner Amendment. You can find that on pages 18 through 29. Ted, the floor is yours.
So this is the CSO abatement project we've been working on for quite some time. Uh, just a quick overview. It's a storage facility proposed down at Connor Park. We have some very large grants to support it. We're hopeful to have about 750 to maybe 850,000 gallons of storage, meaning that anytime we discharge a CSO historically at these two, uh, outfalls that are nearby, anything less than 750 won't go into the river, hold in a tank, pump it to treatment plant, and get full treatment afterwards. Something that sounds boring, something that does not sound boring to me. But, um, the fact of the matter is, is we've done some geotechnical investigations during the design process. We're about 90% complete. But, but early on, we did some, some boring soil samples, checked groundwater level. And in the project cost, we've, we've allotted a, a large sum of money for de-watering the site during excavation, stabilizing the site for this large excavation. But as we're approaching the end, we think it would be prudent to spend $24,000 to do some additional investigation so we can just reduce the likelihood of potential change orders during construction. Meaning that if a contractor digs into the ground, sees that it's wet, and says it's, it's, it's more wet or less stable than what the initial round indicated, then they can hit the city up for large change orders, which we want to avoid. So, in my opinion, it's a, a low amount to spend to try to foolproof later on during construction. So I gave everybody the, the amendment for 24,000. With that would be a clean water state revolving fund loan amendment. I guess, are there any questions?
Okay. Alderman Tadio.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules and take this matter up tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And a motion to authorize the Commissioner of Public Works to sign the, these two documents related to Connor Park CSO Storage Project. One, the Engineering Services Agreement Amendment. Two, with Aldrich and Elliott substantially in the form presented, pending the city attorney's review. And number two, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Step Two Loan Agreement.
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is that gonna cover what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, ready, moving right along. We're back to Treasury Markowski. Sorry, we didn't get you all at once there. Think you're going back and forth. Uh, looks like we got the presentation of financial reports of the city at RRA April 30th, 2025.
Yeah, so, um, I emailed the reports, um, for the end of April. So now we're gonna start looking at, um, really our income expenses. Are we on target? And start, start looking ahead of, um, for the end of the year and what we might have available for, to apply to the next tax rate, if we're, if we have funds available. So I start looking at where we are in the delinquencies. Did we, how did we look compared to last year? So we just had our, um, fourth quarter collection, so I'll report that out end of May, um, really how that's looking. Um, but I also, when I'm doing this report, I often will go back and compare to last year. So when I'm reporting out right now, um, bank balance is at 15 million, and I compared to last year, it was, um, 18 or more. So I said, what, what happened to our cash balance? And it was really, um, we had a lot of bond fund cash, and we had more money in that ARPA, was ARPA fund. So that really made that difference. Um, when I started looking at delinquencies and comparison, in comparison, our tax, property tax delinquencies are up significantly more than last year same time. Um, but I wanna see how we did through the May collection to see really, um, what's the problem there? Do we have more? Are the balances just high? What, you know, number of accounts? I really wanna look at that, um, to see if we're really experiencing more delinquencies overall, citywide. I do have three properties that have somewhat larger balances that I sent, we have sent to tax sale, but they're tied in probate. So their balances are kind of frozen with us, so, until we can get the, we have an attorney working on the tax sale, so, um, I wanted to report that out. Water and sewer, uh, those balances, delinquencies look really good. We just sent, I think they sent out 40 shut-off notices last week, so you'll see those, working those down. Um, as Rick from Sullivan Powers had reported, I've been reporting out the, those water and sewer funds, not really, um, generating enough cash to cover the expenses in those funds. So something we'll continue to watch, and I'll work with, um, uh, Bob Protovansky, Commissioner and DPW on that. Just watching that, are we, what's happening with our rates study that we're not, not generating what we should there? So, um, then I'll move on to balance sheets. When we look at, when you're looking at the general fund, you'll see, um, we always go to the unassigned fund balance. That's the big number. That's the one that tells us if we have funds to roll forward. So when I'm looking at it, you, if you see it on the general fund balance sheet, it's 3.6 million, but it's really, that would be great if we had 3.6 million and we had that much to put for the tax rate. But that is extra inflated this year because we had so much spending from that ARPA account. So that's reflecting those changes in other fund balances, so, um, that. And then I'll move on to, um, income and expenses department-wide. If you were, if all things were steady, we'd be at 83%, right? With, that's what our target would be. And if you look, um, I kinda detail group them by department, we're really right in line at about 81% for most departments, um, looking at expenses. When I look at revenue, we're on target there for, um, non-tax, um, property revenue. I know there's some concern about recreation revenue. Um, and I don't know, April is not a big month for recreation revenue, so I did a comparison from this April to last April. Um, there's a lot of revenue in February, March, when we start, um, the day camps. So the revenue in recreation, I think we're gonna find is pretty much on target, um, at the end of the year, forecasted, I think at least on budget of what was budgeted, um, from what I could see. Nothing, no department was really concerning as far as overspending, but we have two months to go, so. When you're looking at water fund and sewer fund, you'll see the, um, water fund, sewer fund revenue right on target, about the 70, with three-quarters build, 75%. Um, however, seeing a little bit, a spike in expenses in the water fund, sewer fund, just something to watch. Um, don't, I really wasn't able to identify what that was, that spending. Parking fund, um, revenue at 77% of budget. That includes permits, tickets, meters. So that, that's a positive. I think we're gonna have a positive in that parking fund at the end of the year. Transit fund is not budgeted, but we actually, at the end of March, our revenues are, exceed our expenses by 25,000, which is actually good. I don't know that I've reported that in a while, that it was looking like that. And then I'm just gonna move to the RRA. RRA has a strong cash balance of about 201,000 right now. We have funds assigned for the rail gateway project, uh, 45,000 capital projects, business development, um, administrative reserve. The revenue and expenses are right on target. Expense is a little bit lower, you know, we're, we don't have the, uh, executive director position filled, so we will likely have some carryover at the end of the year in the RRA. So. And anytime any of you wanna come in and ask questions, if, I mean, there's a lot of material here, so if there's something, please.
Okay. Anyone have anything for Treasurer Markowski up to this point? I think we're all set.
Okay.
For now, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, we have one more. I hope I haven't got it out of order. I have a request for, I have so many things here, I apologize.
Status of borrowing.
I've been working on, um, bond applications. So in doing that, I was looking at compliance issues with the bonds. One of the, um, things that we do every year in the department is there's a post-compliance issuance checklist for every bond that we have with the, um, municipal, Vermont Municipal Bond Bank. So in doing that, I noticed that there were two bonds that we have completed all of the work, all of the project work. So what I'm, my request from the board is to sign off on that certificate of completion. So those are, those issues are done, and I will send those to the bond bank. So I would, I was hoping that you could take the matter up tonight.
Okay. Alderman Tadio.
A motion to suspend the rules and take this matter up tonight.
Second.
All righty, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And a motion to approve the certificate of project completion for the street sidewalk, 2023 Bond Series 2, and structures, 2021 Bond Series 1, and circulate the certificates for signature.
Second.
All righty, motion's been made and seconded. Does anyone have any questions for our city treasurer? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And Alderman.
And then I will make another motion to take up the second matter tonight, to suspend the rules and take this other matter up tonight.
Second.
All righty, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And I will make a motion to approve the declaration of intent.
I'll, I'll update you on that.
Okay. Great.
Because I didn't have that declaration of intent for the packet, and I was speaking with bond counsel today, um, and he wanted to wait for another meeting on that. Not necessary to have it tonight, so I don't need that motion, although I really appreciate it. I had hoped to get it done, but you will see me again.
Okay, so we're gonna withdraw that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That one I need, yes. That, uh, certificate of completion and the other was, um, a form that I needed for one of the borrowings, but don't worry.
So we all set then?
So we are all set. I am all set, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. Uh, almost down to the bottom here. Attorney LaChance, looks like you have a couple of things here, responses to legal services RFP.
Yes, um, so we did get a couple of responses to the RFP that I put out last month for outside legal services, and I'm just looking for a motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Alderman Talbot.
Motion to refer discussion of the RFP responses to the Finance Committee.
Second.
All righty, motion is to refer. It's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. That's that one. And amended city solar estoppel agreement.
Yes, so if you'll recall, the last, I believe it was the last meeting, um, there was the city solar estoppel agreement. I asked you all to sign. The city solar was finalizing some things, and they ended up coordinating with a sister company of the original one. So there is amended language in one paragraph just indicating the company name change. It's the only thing that changed, um, but representing it so that could be approved by the board if they so choose.
Okay, Alderman Tadio.
Motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amended city solar estoppel agreement.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney on that? All righty, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. And the mini training has been deleted, uh, and you do have a request for an executive session here.
Uh, yes, and I realize I forgot to refer to the end of the meeting. It is relatively quick if Alderman Whitcomb and Alderman Donahue are fine holding their committee reports, or I leave it to the chair's discretion.
Or I leave it to the chair's discretion.
So I did my committee report, so we're all set there.
Yeah, your, yours is done, so, um, yeah, it's gonna be quick?
It should be quick.
It should be quick. Okay, so why don't we move into an executive session right now? And we need a couple of motions.
Then I will go ahead and read the motions for the executive session. Uh, so I entertain a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation to which the city as a party would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such pending litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
All right, and then I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, city attorney, treasurer, and clerk to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1E, and Title I, Section 313A1F.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so let's pick up where we left off, and if I'm not mistaken, we are under reports of standing committees. Alderman Whitcomb's Finance Committee report is next.
Thank you, President Alair. Uh, the Finance Committee met on May 13th, 2025. On the agenda, we had two items, the opioid settlement funds allocation request from the police department, which had two subsections, outreach care team initiatives and the situation table initiative. Also on the agenda was the city debt schedule, current borrowing needs, and bond compliance matters. The committee members present were myself as chair, Alderman Davis as vice chair, Alderman Kupaly, and Alderman McLure. Others present were President Alair, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Gillum, Alderman Tadio, Mayor Dungus, Treasury Markowski, Attorney LaChance, Chief Kukol, Commander Proudty, and Carrie Savage, who at the time was just a private citizen, and Alderman. The meeting commenced at 5:30 PM. Chair Whitcomb initiated discussion by requesting a consensual review of the opioid settlement fund. Mayor Dungus reported that no funds have been dispersed from the opioid settlement fund to date. Chief Kukol then proposed adding an item to the agenda, the allocation of funds from the opioid treatment fund to support treatment court. Alderman Davis moved to include this on the agenda, and the committee unanimously approved the motion with a vote of four to zero. Commander Proudty provided the committee with a brief history of the opioid settlement funds, emphasizing the impact of the opioid epidemic on the Rutland community and the police department. Commander Proudty advocated these funds directly, the funds directly allocated to Rutland[1733.72] should be reserved for entities exclusively within Rutland City and serving its community. Next, Commander Proudie discussed the outreach care team initiative, beginning with its origins and evolution. Commander Proudie explained how the initiative had positively impacted both individuals it serves in the community organizations. Commander Proudie highlighted the individuals served by the outreach care team typically identifies high utilizers of services or those without any connections to existing support systems. Commander Proudie then described the vehicle the Police Department wished to procure, which with the necessary modifications provide appropriate services, and presented a quote, uh, quoted cost of 122,888 dollars. Commander Proudie stated that without specific funding, this vehicle's expenditure would not be included in the Police Department's operational budget. Finally, Commander Proudie asserted that substantial data supports the outreach care team's work in both addressing current needs and promoting prevention. Alderman Davis made a motion to disperse 122,000 dollars, 122,888 dollars from the opioid settlement fund for the outreach care team's command post vehicle, and 4,250 dollars from the opioid settlement fund for the command post vehicle radio system, all of which support mobile intervention, treatment, and recovery services offered by qualified professionals and service providers, such as peer recovery coaches for persons with loyalty in any co-occurring STD or mental health conditions for persons who have experienced an opioid overdose. The motion passed four to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Any questions or comments on, uh, the motion before us? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. Commander Proudie next discussed the Situation Table Initiative, beginning with its history and detailing its evolution. Commander Proudie discussed the Situation Table. It was designed to bring multiple agencies together to address individuals with significant co-occurring health, social behaviors, financial housing challenges. Commander Proudie described the space in which the Situation Table is hosted. It's not adequate to continue to provide service, and that significant renovation is required. The committee discussed the Situation Table and is supportive of the initiative, but has requested that the issue remain in committee until receipts for the full scope of work has been completed. Next, Alderman McClure made a motion to authorize 1,000 dollars be utilized from the opioid settlement fund to support treatment and recovery courts that provide evidence-based options for persons with opiate use disorder or any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health conditions. The motion passed four to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Any debate on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
The next item addressed by committee included city debt schedule, current borrowing needs, bond compliance matters, which was reviewed by Treasurer Markowski. Treasurer Markowski reviewed each of the funds and associated debts. No explicit action or statement related to any of these items, and the meeting adjourned at 6:25 PM.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much, Alderman Whitcomb, for your report. Uh, I appreciate it. Moving along. There is no select committees in, uh, on our agenda. Reports of representatives, we have one from Alderman Donahue, traffic safety.
Yeah, um, Chairman, we met on, uh, Friday, the 16th of May, and there wasn't anything significant enough to bring to the board. Um, it was pretty much, uh, traffic stuff. So, I think I'll just pass at this point.
You did make a mention of that beforehand, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, not that the Traffic Safety Committee doesn't take up important issues, but.
No, they do.
In this case, it was just more mundane. Alrighty, so.
That's the word I was looking for, mundane.
Mundane. Nothing for petitions, border control commissioners, cannabis, unfinished business, any unfinished business to come before the board. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business before the board. Alderman McClure.
Thank you, President Alair. Um, a question that has been raised to me by some constituents of mine within the downtown district are concerns about parking. And when we began this session and committee assignments were given, the Parking Committee was abolished. I do not know what to do or where to direct these people to have these conversations about parking. It was a big enough issue where Gordon wrote an article about parking and people losing parking in the downtown come construction of the hotel. I don't know what the process would be, but I would like to request to you, as the president of the board, to reinstate the Parking Committee. I was a very active member of that committee when we had it. It was something I was very passionate about as a pedestrian, as pedestrians are also impacted by parking, even if we're not driving the cars. Uh, so that is my request this evening as either information on where I can send them, or can we bring that committee back so people have somewhere to go with these concerns?
Well, thank you. Um, Mayor Dungeons, you had your hand up.
I, I hear the request for the Parking Committee reinstatement, and if that's what you choose to do, that's totally fine. I do, however, believe that, you know, the issues that we chose to put in that committee at that time were of a grand scale, and these one-on-one issues are things that both the Department of Public Works and the Police Department, who are tasked with different aspects of parking, could absolutely handle. And Bob has dealt with most of those questions on a one-off basis. He's actually empowered to make a lot of the decisions, even to the point when it comes to things like ticketing in no parking areas where the chief currently has, uh, Chief of Police currently has authority over it. It, he is also able to delegate that authority, and we've been having those internal discussions of what should stay at PD and what should go to DPW. So, I'll just keep you that in mind.
Yep, Alderman McClure.
So, just a follow-up. It sounds like the appropriate place, without creating a new committee, would just be to refer these to DPW and encourage people with concerns to reach out to Commissioner Protivansky?
And, and without getting into too much detail, that was kind of my thought process because that's the way we were doing it when I was mayor, and, uh, it seemed to work pretty seamlessly. You would get, uh, the commissioner involved with the chief. Traffic Safety would be able to talk about, uh, parking at that, at those meetings, which now Alderman Donahue is, uh, attending. So, I think that there, there was never an issue that came to me that, that needed, um, its own committee until you got, you know, some of the initiatives that you did downtown with, uh, with the new, um.
Park Mobile.
Exactly, exactly.
On that note, that is why so many people were coming to me looking for the Parking Committee, was because of all the work we did with Park Mobile, because it's primarily downtown business owners who are reaching out. So, thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
I'll send them to DPW and to talk to Bob.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alderman Gillum.
Noticing that this might go, is the committee is dealing with the downtown information system. I think that should go to them also. So, merchants all know what's going on on a day-to-day basis, so. And the Vermoval Valley Transit System should be invited to the next meeting, because they can start, uh, moving people around into the parking deck instead of using Center Street.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else have anything?
Under new business.
Oh, uh, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business.
Yeah, okay.
Alderman Donahue.
Just two things to wrap up real quick. Uh, one is a point of interest that, uh, with the completion soon, this summer, uh, in June, with the first Seven to Sunset Concert of the gazebo. Prior to that, of course, the Rutland City Band plays, and, uh, the public might be interested to know that on, uh, June 15th, which is their kickoff date, which is Father's Day, uh, they will be actually playing at the, uh, Gondik Center at the gazebo there. So, I, I think that's an appropriate venue, uh, replete with parking, et cetera. Um, and then the following week, uh, same thing on the 22nd. That's 6:30 to 8:30 at the Gondik Center for the Rutland City Band, and then their big return to Main Street Park with the, the official, after the official grand opening of the gazebo. Um, so I'm looking forward to that, uh, but I thought that, that would be a important note for those that attend that Sunday meeting, and I know I've seen you there, President Alair, yourself.
Absolutely.
And I think we're still the longest-running municipally-funded city band in the country.
Excuse me.
Good bless.
Thank you.
Uh, and one last thing. Um, I wanted to thank the mayor and the department heads. One of the reasons I didn't have a lot of questions to ask tonight was that, uh, the packets are, uh, really been quite thorough and robust, and a lot of information, as long as, you know, we have the time, and I do take the time to read all of it. Um, you know, it makes the evening go quite smoothly, but we're also well-informed. And I really want to thank, uh, the department heads, particularly Mayor, who chaired that, um, for taking the time to put that level of information, uh, in our board package so that we can do our homework and, and do what we're here to do. Um, and it even gave me time to, uh, look up and understand what, um, for instance, geotechnical subservice investigations were.
You can talk about it afterwards. Alright, and one other thing, I just have one quick thing I wanted to, um, uh, ask the board's pleasure for a referral. There's been some talk, and I'm not sure if it's been referred to charter and ordinance, but there's been some, uh, discussion in previous years about moving the date for, uh, collections for water and sewer. Right now, they're kind of, uh, coincide with tax, um, collections. They're very close together. Uh, it, it's, it's tough for the folks that are doing the work here in City Hall, but it's also tough for the taxpayers and the ratepayers out there to come up with all that money all at once. So, um, I'd like to ask for a referral to charter and ordinance to take a look at possibly moving those dates to have them a little farther away from each other.
Second.
Alrighty, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Alrighty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.